Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. We'll start with the prayer, then the flag. Heavenly Father, we just come to you just to thank you for the village that we live in. It's just a great community. We pray for our citizens. We pray for our country. We just pray that the men and women around this table make the right decision that's right for our community. And all these things, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. Roll call.
Martha.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Present.
Martin.
Here.
Pepper.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna have the swearing-in for our new officer. Everybody get the meter. The chief's gonna come up with her.
Oh, excuse me.
Hi, Sierra.
Hi, Sierra.
Fran. Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
And the ordinances of the Village of Hicksville.
Defiance County, Ohio.
Defiance County, Ohio.
I will well and truly serve...
I will...
Well, well, well.
...truly serve...
...the Village of Hicksville.
The Village of Hicksville.
As a police officer...
As a police officer.
...without favor...
Without favor.
Or affection...
Or affection.
Malice...
Malice.
Or ill.
Or ill will.
That I will see...
That I will see.
Or cause...
Or cause.
Our community's peace...
Our community's peace.
To be kept...
To be kept.
And preserved.
And preserved.
That I will prevent...
That I will prevent.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...all offenses against that peace.
All offenses against that peace.
And that...
And that.
While I continue...
While I continue.
...to be a police officer...
To be a police officer.
Discharge all duties...
Discharge all duties.
thereof...
thereof.
Faithfully...
Faithfully.
According to the law...
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, next on the agenda is Dave Ushbaugh here.
I do not think they're gonna be here.
They're not gonna make it?
No.
Okay. Kara Porter from the Defiance County Library System. You go up to the podium, please.
Hi, thanks. Do I need to do that, or did I just...
No, you're fine.
I didn't say... Okay. My name's Kara Porter. I'm the director of the Defiance Public Library System. So Johnson Memorial Library is one of our branches. And so I wanted... I approached, so one of our trustees, Susan Mack, and talked to her about a project that I saw a grant for that I thought might work in Hicksville. And it's called a storybook walk. So I had some... I did a little stream of consciousness FAQ for you, so you can see this. So the grant is from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and it was sent over to me by the... I should be there myself, in case I'm using...
I've seen...
Kara, I'm gonna do it. Okay. So I'm talking with the new United Way person, Abby Wong-Pope, and she sent this grant my way and thought that I might be interested. So I approached Defiance and now I'm talking to you, the village, to see if you might be interested in doing this in partnership with the library. So one of the things about the grant that I didn't realize until I read it a few times is that I can't submit the grant on my own as the library director. It has to be submitted by whoever owns the property where this project would happen. So a storybook walk is a pathway. Usually it's a sidewalk that's accessible and accessible for a wheelchair. There's parking nearby. And there's displays put along the walk, so they... And there's pages of a picture book put in each display, so if you walk along, you can sequentially read the picture book as you're walking along. So it's a great multi-generational activity, and it gets people outside. There's one in Sherwood currently that the Friends helped put in, and the Friends of the Sherwood Library helped put in, and it's proven very popular. So I just wanted to throw this idea out to you and see if this is something you might be interested in partnering with us on. So I would serve as grant writer, but the village would have to actually submit the grant. And I would get another community partner to sign on to provide the matching funds. So I was thinking about approaching either the Rotary or Johnson Memorial Library Friends. Happy to answer any questions?
So the timeline on this month, so you need it right away, then?
Yeah. So the good news that I got today is that they're gonna run another round next year. So we could... There is the possibility of postponing, trying to do it this year, or we can try and do it this year and postpone it, postpone it to next year, or do both.
So you'd probably have to know either tonight's meeting or next meeting?
Well, I just need to know... You wouldn't have to sign any paperwork tonight, but you would have to give somebody on the council or one of your officials authority to sign if you wanted to pursue this.
What was the exact location that you were thinking?
Well, I was gonna leave that up to the village. I was thinking it would make sense in a park, but that's really up to the village to decide.
If I can add something to Kara, we've been talking a little bit back and forth. We had a park board meeting here last Wednesday, and I presented it to the park board with the package and the concept and everything. We were all in favor. We thought it'd be a neat enhancement for the park. But then also, you know, they were all okay in working with her in some specific areas of the park. But then I was thinking about community-wide also, instead of, you know, we have a lot of people that walk and, you know, take advantage of our downtown area. There's some places I think we can add some other storybook, 'cause I don't think it has to be a specific 12, you know, feet apart, or 100 yards apart, or anything. We can maybe spread them around town, you know, so people sit up by the flag sometimes. And some of the restaurants, when people sit outside and talk, you see a lot of people gathering at certain restaurant venues in town. There's some park benches and, you know, around town and different things like that. So I thought, you know, getting with Cory, if that's something that would be utilized. They would need us, our personnel, to actually place them, cement them in the ground or whatever, or however they're gonna be put. But they would need our help in that.
If you can calculate the dollar amount of that labor, that can be part of the copay too. But the most that the grant could get is $10,000, so the most of the copay is gonna be is $2,000, so it's not big.
Can you tell me where Sherwood has theirs at?
It's in a little reservation park, kind of behind where the new fire station is.
So it's all within the park?
Yeah.
Now, on here it says that the entity that owns the land...
Yes, that's correct.
They're gonna have to be the applicant. But how would that work? Like Mike brings up the point, if they were through downtown, or how would that actually work?
Well, the town actually owns the sidewalks and the easements, so you could do it on that. I'm not positive that you would be able to put it downtown, because I think one of the things they're looking for is to have each sign 40 paces apart.
Right.
And so I don't know how you would... I mean, maybe that would be possible to do, but it won't...
My concern in the park is there's no sidewalks in the park. Accessory, handicap accessible, and half the park is owned by Defiance County Metropolitan, a park where we don't own anything on the west side of the road.
Okay.
So I think where you'd put it at?
10 grand will only get you... She's saying 40 paces between each sign. 10 grand will get you one pace, one section. I mean, it would be very...
No, this is just the signs, not the size.
Not the size.
So it says the cost of 17 displays is...
They're already looking for concrete to be in places where it's handicap accessible. They're just looking to put the signs in.
Oh, well, then...
But the sidewalk, the only sidewalk we really have over there is from Froggy Park to the pool, that the village owns. And that'd be a lot of signs and 17 signs and that short distance.
When I was first thinking about this, I had... I've only been in the park a couple of times, and so I wasn't aware that there wasn't... I knew that there was a walkway there, but I didn't know it wasn't paved. So the other option, if you are interested in pursuing this, is I know... I'm a member of the Rotary, so I swap between Rotaries. Sometimes I go to the Hicksville one, and sometimes I go to the Defiance. But last time I was at Hicksville, Shannon, who's the incoming president, was talking about that making... Putting a walkway in for her Rotary project while she was president. So I'm gonna go to the Rotary tomorrow and talk with them and see about this too, but 'cause it's possible that it might get happened. If they can commit to doing a walkway, I don't know what their resources are, but if they could commit to doing a half-mile paved, then this might all come together at the same time.
Do you have to have the, like, the location and all of that as part of this grant?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they want... 'Cause they... I think they come out and do actual walking search stuff into their Sherwood school. So in their grant application, it is possible to do both things, all things at the same time, but it says specifically in the grant it won't pay for sidewalks. Is that...
I'm just trying to think of somewhere big in Hicksville where you'd be able to scatter those, like the fairgrounds or something.
Right, right.
There's a lot of people that... You got blacktop all the way around the whole area, and there's a lot of kids that take their bikes and walk.
High school track.
You can't get a wheelchair in the term style.
Take it out.
I think with such a short notice and the amount of things that we have going on, we should thank this young lady very much for presenting it, but we should look at next year.
Yeah, timeline.
Trying to think of where, trying to think of a location.
Yeah. And that would give the Rotary time if there was, you know, if they thought there was a possibility of having a project that would give them time.
And the park board's been one to travel around there for ever.
Yep. I think we're just... The timing's not right, I don't think.
Yeah.
But if we could put it off till next year...
Yeah, if we had the facilities, it'd be great.
Is there a guarantee it's gonna be there next year?
Well, he didn't guarantee me. I asked him, 'cause I thought this was gonna... I thought there's no way we're gonna be able to pull this together at this point, even though I wanted to make a good faith effort towards that. And so I asked him that, and he didn't say it guaranteed. He just said that the current plan is that the grant will be offered again next year.
That's what makes me a little nervous, 'cause a great project, I'd like to see it happen, but timing's a little closer.
Yeah.
Is that the council's wishes, to wait?
I don't know where else we could put it, you know? If there was a place to put it, it'd be great.
The drive itself acts as a walkway a lot along the side of the drive. It's an option.
You'd have to walk them up the right side and walk them back down the left side, 'cause there's nowhere to go once you get up there, unless you come back into stone.
The road itself, you mean?
Yeah.
And I don't know if that'd be a safe environment if you're standing on the side of the road reading a board and cars are coming through. I mean, they probably wouldn't all...
Yeah, they're reading a book, and they complain about kids on cell phones, so it's not a lot of difference.
Just didn't know. They have to be that... The distance is critical, or that's what I was trying to think, if you incorporate the whole town with them.
Right, right.
Does it have to be a half-mile path?
No, it can be longer than that, but it can't be shorter.
Do you have anything, Kent?
Guess not.
Come on, high senior.
I think spreading it around town, you know, is how you're gonna keep track of where you're going. I don't know how much your walking pass cost. That's something you're gonna need to note before you commit to anything. Because you're paying that, this is only for the staying.
Right.
Until you know where you're walking for it, whether you wanna call it, I don't know how you can decide any of it. I've been to the one in Sherwood, and yeah, it's nice. I'm not opposed to that, but...
Yeah, and they put theirs in without us in that walkway, because they did it privately. They didn't get to do it through a grant, so I mean...
What part are they using?
They bought... It's just like a dirt pathway.
Oh, that's permissible?
Well, it's not... It's... They didn't do it... You're getting a grant from Ohio Department of Natural Resources. They paid for it on their own. So the Friends did a fundraiser and paid for all of it.
Okay.
So they couldn't afford to put in a sidewalk. So I mean, now, they did that four years ago, and now I'm trying to help them get a sidewalk, because it's really hard to navigate with a stroller. But so it's something... So what we're talking... I'm talking with that branch manager about doing is selling bricks, having a brick sidewalk with people's camps on it. And we're not gonna be able to do that for the whole length of it, but we'll be able to...
Will that be acceptable for ADA?
I haven't crossed that bridge yet.
I think you need to cross that one.
I just started working with her on it, so we haven't gotten that far. And I don't know if we could put like blacktop or something, or what, if there's like some special requirement for that. I... Yeah, I've been on park paths that I know were designed for ADA, and they were like packed. They must've used like granite dust or stone dust, and they packed it down real hard. But that's... I think you have to have special like equipment to do the work with them. So anyhow, so I guess what I'm asking for tonight is I just wanted to present the idea, answer any questions. If you did wanna pursue trying to do this this year, I would need you to make a motion to authorize some... One of you or one of your staff members to sign for it. And if you wanna postpone to next year, that's fine too. I am gonna talk to the Rotary tomorrow.
Can you get back with us on that after the Rotary?
Sure.
I was probably waiting.
Yeah, I think it's just too much too soon. We just don't have time.
The timeline, yeah.
Yeah, and I apologize. When I first started this, I thought there was already a walkway there, so that was my fault.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
Please don't forget us.
I will not.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm a president, and I'm for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, need your approval for the July 19 regular council meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections?
I move.
Second? Second. Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Oh, yeah.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
I'm staying.
Martin?
Yes.
Martha?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
You have before you the bills. Need for your approval. Any questions?
The truck we got from Schmitty, we couldn't get that through State Purchasing.
For my turn?
What?
No, we couldn't.
Why not? Why... I'm talking to you. Why not?
I have no idea. This is way before me.
Oh, yeah?
I think it's been on order for, I imagine, quite a while.
Jim doesn't, and State Purchasing, at the time we ordered it, did not offer that type of truck.
Just get a standard cab, four-wheel drive?
Extended cab.
Extended cab?
Yeah, 250.
Well, give it someplace to sleep.
I don't think it's that big.
It's kinda like the street department's grid here, as far as the cab.
That'll last a long time. Any other questions?
I don't have any.
I'll entertain a motion to...
I'll second that.
A second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Martha?
Yes.
Pepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, boards and commissions. There's no minutes submitted, unless somebody's got something to present. Council...
I put the park board minutes... They don't have a title on them, but they came into my email tonight right before the meeting started.
Okay.
So it's from that.
That could be discussed from the department. Okay, we'll do that then. Okay, committee reports. Water and Sewer Committee met twice. Guys are busy.
Busy, busy. As you can see, the first one, we sent out the third kind of final letter out to the residents of Haven Drive that are still addressing their easement issues, trying to get them to remove those items and get them back across the easement section. Mike sent those out, I think, here, or Troy did it. Mike sent them out, I think, Thursday or Friday of last week, and I'm not sure if he's heard back from anybody. Number two there, energy optimizers. I know that there was air ahead of minutes. It's in your packet also. If you guys could pull the energy optimizer contract kind of proposal, pull that for us. Came to town, at first we kinda talked about solar, solar options maybe for the village, and then in the process, you guys kinda do a broad range of different projects and services. They came and presented. I had three individuals there, you can see in my minutes. As we were talking to them, kinda taking a look at our entire infrastructure for the city, all the buildings, the pumps, the substations, everything, we kinda thought it was a good idea to have them kinda go through and do a energy audit for everything with our utilities and the way they run their... This kinda spells out here, I don't think they missed anything, 'cause we asked them to kinda take a look at everything. I know they toured the sewer plant that day. We run a lot of power through that plant, which, much as it works, but in the process, they kept the same kinda cost, but broadened their range of scope with all the projects. We were giving your... Kind of... Blessing, we were all okay with it.
They were very enlightened. They told us the things, you know, maybe the reason we have a $10,000 power bill at the sewer plant, we might not even be running the right pumps. And they give different references to sewer plants that they've been into, that... And they're giving, putting names this long on certain types of pumps that do this or do that, and their cycles, their megahertz and everything else, and... Yeah, okay, take a look at them. And they're thinking, just from taking a look, they're taking... They can save less money.
The only thing is we may have to spend a lot of money to change out motors and just to draw it back.
Yes, yes.
Taking consideration. That's my only... I was at that meeting.
But if you're roughly, and it's not $10,000 every month, but let's just ballpark, you're spending $120,000 a year just for electricity. But you definitely need to look at it.
So any thoughts, council? You want that company to come and explain more? They were supposed to be here tonight.
Right. But they have brought back... And I talked to the young lady that was here, and they said... Kirsten, she said they probably weren't coming, but they, like I said, they re-submitted a more detailed plan of what they were gonna take a look at. And if we were okay to roll with it, they would get signed up to come to town and start looking at things. I mean, we've done a lot of things over the course of time with smoke studies and GIS systems, and, you know, we're really trying to get a hold of all the infrastructure with water and sanitary, and we spent a ton of money on studies, audits, a bunch of things over the course of time. But, you know, I think if we don't do it now, I think it's something we maybe wanna do, you know, it's not something that's been budgeted, of course, in the... I don't know where you would spread it out, 'cause you're kinda taking a look at, you know, the pool and the water and the sanitary, the buildings and everything. But if we don't do it now, I think we should do it sometime in the near future. You know, like this company come in, they also will help, not purchase, but help you pick the right equipment to rebuy and things of that nature. It's not like they give you an audit, say goodbye, thanks for the time, you could save money. I think they're gonna be more diligent in not buying it through them. They're gonna, you know, they don't sell that stuff, but they will help you pick out the right equipment.
But they are affiliated with companies that do carry the units that might possibly be of interest to us and can hook us up with them, and won't be like us, just going to Fort Wayne and going to National Pipe or something. I mean, we're gonna be dealing with somebody that deals with them, so that they'll know exactly what we want.
I'm very familiar with them. I've dealt with them.
They spoke quite highly of you.
Yeah, I've dealt with them a lot. Lighting optimizer is what they start off with, and then energy optimizer. Greg, I remember his name, Greg Smith, the owner, Linda's the vice president. They've done all the energy upgrades at Fairview Schools recently, in the last couple of years. They've done the solar field for the school. They've done all their exterior lighting at the school, interior lighting. Their turnkey operation, they do all their energy audits, they'll let you know your return on investment, how long it takes to pay back, and they've even let the school sign up for the contract where we're gonna save, let's just say, $10,000 a year, and it's gonna cost an $80,000 project. They would budget it for eight years, where you're actually only paying your savings to them over 10 years. And so you pay for your project with your savings, and they'll do, set up a small loan for that if you're... If you like to have a small payment plan set up once a year, every so many months. So, no, they've always been real great. If they miss anything, and it's their fault, they don't ask... They never ask for another dime. They have no changeovers ever. They take care of it, whether it's their fault. If they miss something, they take care of it, so...
But then from dealing with them... But I'm sorry.
So are they actually doing the work? What I look at is just that they're just doing the study on this one here. Like out at the school, are they actually performing work? They subcontract out some of the work, and they did some of the work internally. Yeah.
Now, you changed all the bulbs, right? But you had a grant that...
First time around.
They furnished all the bulbs, right?
We're AEP here. There's... Well, back then, there was a lot of incentive money from retrofitting light bulbs for metal halide sodium to LED, and we took advantage of a lot of that.
Right, 'cause that's not there right now.
Correct, yeah. Everything's LED throughout the whole building.
No, I mean...
Oh, the incentive money? I think AEP's pulled a lot of incentive. At one time, there was a lot of money going from T-12 to T-8s, and now they got rid of all the money for T-12s, 'cause you should've already done it by now. Lighting controls, occupancy sensors, we've done all sorts of grant stuff through AEP, and, you know, they helped with a lot of the projects too, so...
Okay, what's your thoughts?
Do we have... I mean, obviously, there's a sizable amount of money. However, if we're going to do this, the cost for all these upgrades is gonna be rather sizable as well, so we're gonna... I mean, if we wait till next year to budget to do the study, then we're another year away from improvements, most likely, unless we're just throwing hypotheticals in there for capital improvements. Is it... I mean, how would we fund? Where would that money come from if we choose to do that? Just a general fund?
You mean the $22,000 for the study?
Yes.
Yeah, guys, $22,000 is a lot of money.
I never... We've never had to pay for a study, but most ours was always lighting, and I know they did the lighting part for free.
Went through on Thursday, this past Thursday. Went through.
And I mean, we spent the whole year, all the employees with no raise, and then you wanna spend $22,000 on a study that's gonna be more money in the future. Future's fine, but like right now, you guys tell me where you want it to come from. It's not in the budget.
If we did just the sewer plant, you could take it out of the sewer fund, right?
Right.
But if you do the other part, that's what you're saying, some will come out of the general...
Everybody has to give it up out of their money. That's the only fair way to do it.
So mostly, it looks like you're... I mean, a lot of that would be Street Department, Sewer Department, right? If I'm looking at that correctly? I guess Fire Station, Police Station.
The whole cost of...
Pretty good chunk of money, that's really all those pumps, they're running all the time. I don't know if those are on BFTs or anything like that. Well, with 14 weeks, I think we need to take a hard look at that pool personally. But how long's this number good for? So they give an expiration on their...
I guess it'll be good for at least 30 days.
I was... What all they said they were gonna do for us, and like I say, they impressed me, and I know that Eric's impressed with them, and I know Cheryl says that's a lot of money. Yes, it is a lot of money, but it sounds cheap to me for what they're gonna do and the savings that are possible to come from this experiment. I know we've spent and sent a whole lot more money than this to Defiance for projects that never, ever transpired, and lots more money.
I guess my only concern on it is they do a great job. I've never had to pay for an audit, but, you know, you spend $22,000, and they come in and tell you, you need to make all these changes, and it's $300,000 to make the changes.
Well, but she had talked... No, she... He said those... What was his name?
David Ushbaugh.
Yeah. David said that there was a chance that they could... They won't get the grants for us, but they can tell us where the grants are and what they are available for. Maybe he'd say he'd help with them. Did he?
I thought they said they would help.
Okay, okay. So, you know, there might be grant monies out there that people like them know about that...
Maybe he can come in next council meeting and talk to us.
He said he would, sure.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna be here, so...
Is that what council would like to see?
But I thought the energy audit is like, say you have to upgrade a motor, and it's gonna come... to cost you $50,000 to upgrade it, but they're going to show you before you buy that $50,000 motor. Lost my oxygen, man. They were going to save you $80,000 in electricity over that course of maybe a 10-year time span or a five-year, and then you can decide, is it worth the money to spend the $50 now or not?
That's true.
You know, it's the savings down the road. I mean, I can't see why we'd change a pump out if there wasn't going to be no savings whatsoever, I mean, we're wasting-
And we can pick and choose, you know, if they said, well, like Taylor said about the pool, if they said, well, you're going to spend $600,000 down there just on pumps and stuff, no we're not, we're going to walk away from it. You know, we can pick and choose what we do. If the only thing that we do is concentrate on the sewer plant to get that ridiculous bill down.
I think it'd be good for the sewer plant and the pool.
Knowing what-
Because you already talked about building a Metroplex, so why would you use other buildings?
Well-
This is a proposal, I mean, we can go back to it and say concentrate on our main energy users right now, the pool, the sewer plant, and I don't know, maybe the-
Water treatment plant.
Water treatment, and say, well, give us, to just look at those three main buildings, what's it going to cost us? I mean, we have electricians in town that come in and do our lighting on our own, kind of thing, just a thought.
This is just a plan, though, so $22,500, we still have to figure out if we want to do, I think, I would say I'm in favor of the audit, we obviously have to figure out how we're going to pay for it, where that money's going to come from. And frankly, if we're going to do the audit, I'd like to, I'd like to see it happen before the end of the year.
Yes.
So then we can budget for capital improvements if it makes sense to do those things.
Do you think you can get Dave to come in next council meeting?
Might call, ask him, no.
Why don't we do that, why don't we concentrate on getting him in here and so that everybody has a chance to find, seek and find what they are curious about and then it won't be a bunch of, I thinks.
Everybody do their homework.
Cheryl, do you think it would make sense to sit down, financial committee, or is it going to do any good us discussing it if it's all the other departments, if it's going to come out of the other departments?
Can you look at their line items and see if they have money for their portion of it?
Well, definitely have to do that.
Here again, I'm going to pipe up, you can yell at me if you want. One department's not got any money left at all, so they're not going to pay anything, are they? And ideally, so when he does the budget, which usually once by the first of October, you ought to have some numbers to plug in there, and they get the study done next week.
Eight to 12 weeks.
And see, their original proposal was for 22 grand just to do the sewer plant. So now they can do the whole town for 22? What was the original?
Fast top.
Well, I was just saying, be that part, make it do the whole town.
Extra $500 bucks to do the rest of the town.
For our original 22.
Buy one, get one.
Yeah. Eight to 12 weeks is cutting it through your budget.
Okay, what's your thoughts?
I'll see about getting them here next meeting.
I will give them a call and see if they can be here, what's the next meeting, August?
Sixteenth, yeah, sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Cheryl, I'll touch base with you and then we'll get a financial maybe.
Okay. Anything else, Mike? Any questions for Mike, committee?
No.
Okay, ordinance committee, Charlie.
We met last Tuesday and came up with a couple of different things to add to the ordinance. The first thing was, 45 days was a reasonable time period when delays did not exist. Any delays were going to be discussed with the village administrator. And then, just to simplify our lives, we're going to word the repair requirements and decide to include that the road must be repaired according to ODOT specs.
Anybody have any questions?
You guys talked about the funding.
Yes, yeah, we're going to keep it the same.
So Troy, after everybody's happy with that?
We'll bring something back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else, Charlie? Good work, thanks. I guess next is the sell the land, there was an email in the packets, any questions on that?
Is everybody up to speed on what's going on? The auction is August 28th.
It was returning.
I said you wanted it done quick, we're getting it done.
I don't know, the golf course, right? They're having the auction on the golf course?
Yes, sir.
The other place was not, gathering place was not available.
Is Bruce exclusively right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I think y'all seen the rate that we got to do it.
Plus expenses.
Plus expenses, yes.
And I talked to Bruce, he's got to get POs, Cheryl, for he just spends it, he knows that.
Yeah, and I talked to him about it, but he told me that he wanted to just go ahead and pay for everything like he normally does and then just present one bill and one PO for that.
Will that work?
When it's already spent.
I don't know, I told you about it the other day and you never said nothing.
Yes, we did, we talked about purchase orders and I told Bruce too, if he already spends it, then.
He told me he would, when I talked to him. Individual POs for every ad, every, things change.
Has it been discussed, I guess, has he had any strategy or how far out he's going or anything as far as advertising, or he just kind of runs with it?
He told me he's going to go over in Indiana, over that way, Fort Wayne and that, put it out there, I didn't know when he-
He's got, he's got the contacts for everybody that belongs to the Fort Wayne Home Builders' Association, different areas of home builders associations that he's going to try to saturate them.
That's what it's going to take?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Not for that, I do have one, well, we had a personnel meeting.
Okay.
Got a personnel meeting at 5:30 today, so that's why I don't have any minutes yet. Notes, we had talked about three different things, one was a personnel issue, dealing with behavior and using the computer a little too much, so we'll discuss that. And another one dealt with Ken Miller, when he retired and took one from full-time to part-time, he has sick time that is supposed to be paid out, and since he went to part-time, we want to know about paying, we want to know about paying him out at his normal full-time rate, not his part-time rate, and the three committee members all agree that that's what should happen, so.
She agree with it? Did that happen?
She wasn't at the meeting.
We told her she-
I invited her to the meeting, she wasn't there.
She didn't.
I emailed you and Cory both same day.
Didn't know that was an invitation.
Yeah, so that was our, that was our vote, three to zero. And then the only other one was Cheryl's supposed to be meeting with the insurance board by August 10th, that's what I thought, August 10th, and after we figure that out, we're going to discuss for next year raises for village employees. And that was all we discussed.
Okay, any questions for Eric, comments? Okay, thanks.
What Cheryl's thought on the paying out?
That's fine with me. He earned it while he was-
I'm sure.
Okay, administrators report, Cory.
Home Brink Excavating had ran into some issues and had asked for an extension, so they were granted a five-day extension. Friday the 6th is the deadline for them to finish up with the water line. We did take delivery of our new 2021 F-250 pickup truck for the sewer department. Wednesday, it'll go in to get the new radio and stuff put in, Bob Aaron will put the radio in it, and then on the 11th, it goes to somewhere in Indiana, to Line-X, Ford dealers is going to take it over there to get the spray and bed liner put in it. Like I said earlier, energy optimizer, optimizers did the lighting audit back on the 29th of And then we are anticipating, working with Bruce Guilford for September 11th, to do a public auction. He's got a bunch of bicycles and stuff that needs to go, and the garage out here has some odds and ends stuff in it, so.
What's the date?
September 11th. And then the 2006 F-250 pickup truck the sewer plant had, actually, the engine went out in it the other day. They're coming back from Kolyta from dropping off the new truck, have lighting put on it and the motor locked up in it, so that'll be up for grabs.
Put it in the auction.
I wanted to ask you guys, do we want to put it in the auction or do you want to have that separate and do sealed bids for that? Because I really don't want to move it two times, a body shop will come get it and move it from the Ford dealer, they'll take it down to the sewer plant, or they can haul it right to OmniSource, or if we wanted to. I think somebody could get some use out of it if they had-
You could put it on Gov. Deals too, if you wanted to. They sell a lot of them.
And means to fix it, it makes somebody a pretty decent-
And then they just have at the sewer plant, just tell them, hey, you got to come and pick it up and-
We got the money out of the old sewer truck, we sold that at auction, right Ken? I sold it, I sold-
The old water, man. Or, I'm sorry. Jesse.
Yeah, yeah, I sold a couple of vehicles that day.
Yeah, I, I said, deals would work, or I didn't know if you'd have to pass legislation if you go to the sealed bid, bro.
The sealed bid would be the least of the three, I would say. Either just include it in an auction that we're already having, that we're going to, you know, when Bruce does it, or just throw it up on Gov. Deals and let them, we've already passed that ordinance for the year, and just, I think Cheryl said Mike might usually do that or something when we've done it.
I've got one question for Troy, I'll reference our bicycles. I think we have to advertise, do we?
Yeah.
How many days we have to advertise that?
I'll have to look specific, but off the top of my head, I don't know that either, unless anybody else knows it. Seems like it was only ever advertised a couple of times, so I'm not sure there is a specific, but I'll get you an answer tomorrow.
Okay.
Were you able to get any numbers on paving?
I took a gentleman through from Tri-State, talking about all the side streets for the spot paving, I have not heard back from him yet. He was hoping to have everything back to me on Friday. And the only number for paving I got was for Charlie for that repair on Bryan Street for that cut-through, and passed that on to him. That was from Steve Lou. I know, I'm still waiting.
Back for the village?
No, it was for the homeowner. I think Cheryl will go ahead to have Amber Drier have her money, you know, issue back to her, yeah, seems like it's setting okay. But no, I have not received a number for all those locations.
Home Brink on High Street, I know the extra stitch for the water line, I've had some businesses out there saying, when are they going to be done, when are they going to keep being done, but I keep reminding them, but once the water line's done, they're going to start on the storm line and extend it pretty much from like Chicago up to the police department there. They got a fire start right on that right away since they already got mobilized still, hopefully that can go through smoothly, I mean.
Completely different crew?
Hall it is.
Do we have a actual deadline for this project? For the whole project? Does it have to be complete and is there penalties associated?
Two dates, right, Ken?
It wasn't in October, you said?
August and November?
For the sewer, August 1st was the water.
When's the sewer?
October 1st. We gave them a week extension until this Friday for the water to be hooked up and flowing.
Repair's not, is repair part of that or no?
You know, as long as the water's flowing, they admit terms of that. Yeah, the restoration work, I know.
Have they passed all their tests, have they done the sanitation chlorine and pressure and everything?
I believe so.
So they, legally, they're flowing now, but they don't have the taps in?
Well, yeah, they hooked up the west end today, I think tomorrow they're going to hook up Chicago Way Avenue and, and everybody's tied in there.
They've got all the, all the taps in?
I think, I know they were having some issues last week, I don't know if it got resolved today or not, I was around and talking to the water department.
I know today they were 45 feet short of pipe, so they had to run, make a run at Toledo to get, to get more pipe. I know today when I left, Jessie, she was there till probably 5 o'clock with them, so.
Okay, any other questions for our administrator, Cory?
Okay, so back to the truck, is that something we just want to put in our auction if we have it on the 11th or?
Probably just throw on Gov. Deals.
I agree, put on Gov. Deals.
A little bit more exposure that way.
You got everything you need, Cory?
Yes.
Okay. Solicitor, Troy.
The only thing I have is resolution 2021-09, a third reading by caption only, a resolution for the village of Hicksville, Ohio to rehire Troy Essex as village solicitor for the village of Hicksville.
This is the third reading, really? And?
I'll make a motion to approve second.
I'll be happy to second that.
Rule call.
Severly.
Yes, ma'am.
Ridgeway.
Certainly.
Martin.
Yes.
Massett.
Yes.
Marth.
Yes.
Clifford.
Yes.
Congratulations, Troy.
So any other questions for our solicitor?
Charlie's out of a job.
Okay, department heads, police chief.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So today is my first day officially back in full-time at Hackens, so thank you all for your support during my time of need. So obviously, we swore in Sierra this evening, she will start August 11th with us. So for the month of July, they worked 213 cases, they had 381 calls for service. That's all I have.
All that paperwork, welcome back.
Yes, welcome back.
Thank you.
Any questions for the chief?
Do you have any officers on leave right now, anybody else, or everybody's back, you got back to full capacity?
Well, we're still going down because Chris Taylor quit, so she'll replace him. Besides vacation, people on vacation.
Because everybody's healthy and doing well.
Yeah, as far as I know, so.
You're in our prayers, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, fire EMS, I don't see anybody here from their committee, you have anything? Must be running smooth. Park director, Mr. Altman, you've got representative?
Nothing to report.
Okay, the minutes are in here, we can go over this. Have you got any questions on the minutes? You're the secretary, right?
Yeah, you typed on it.
14 leaks?
Yes. Are they-
A hypo? No.
Is it worth the fix?
The pool?
Yes.
That Val made it sound like it was.
I think it was $1,100, is that the price?
I don't know.
Is that what you heard?
I didn't, I know her price.
$1,100 to repair the leak, so.
Does anybody know where it's leaking?
Same place. I guess same place as last year, for the ladders.
Oh, yeah?
But I think it's in here, she's going to get estimates for new liners. How long's that been in there? Long time, like 20 years.
I think it's been more than that.
Okay, long time.
They got a new liner, we took the liner out when I fixed the drain and turn line. Took that liner out, then I've been out of business 22 years.
Okay, so it's done well.
Twenty-five or 30 years ago.
That's a good length of liner.
Heck, yeah.
I think it's being well-used, as she said, the attendance has been up, a lot of people, kids are using it and I know it's-
We had, some of you guys might not know, but we used to have a little fund that we were saving up to redo, build a new pool, and during the hard times, we used that money. But I think it would be a great thing to entertain starting another one. Even if, even if we're not putting, you know, thousands away every year, if we could just put something away every year. Sooner or later, the thing's going to die.
That was back in oh-eight. It was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that got us through that financial. But, yeah.
Is there any thoughts of doing a levy for a pool instead of...
Bring it, a what?
What's that?
School levy.
Oh, doing a levy for the, for a pool. Some communities do that where if their town wants to have a new pool, have one up and running that, they'd go to the taxpayers and ask them if they want to fund a new pool.
We could try that.
I mean, the village still pays to maintain it and pays staffing to be there, but...
But that would be gradual funding, wouldn't be just lump sum, so... We'd have to probably, yeah, that's a good point.
We would have to take, we would have to have to take a loan out.
Yes.
And then let the levy pay the loan back, right?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like there's obviously some, several projects that need, want to, that the park wants to see happen.
Maybe just a park levy.
Yes, if we're going to go the levy route, I think it would make sense to...
That's part of the plan.
Part of the park levy.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments?
Who's going to follow up on that? Park board, the park board?
There's a question here as far as who's in charge of creating bylaws. Do we have bylaws for the, what the park's, park board's responsibility is?
No. No. That was brought up at that meeting. I just kind of set out what the park board's mission is, not mission, but responsibility.
Are we planning on drafting bylaws for the park board?
They're going to, the park board's going to get some from other towns and then they're going to look at it and then they'll present it to us. Yes.
So, they're going to draft their own bylaws?
I think that was the question, is who is responsible for drafting the bylaws? We didn't know. And I mean, I've just given one last two months here, it's kind of whirlwind and what's going on down there.
Normally, I would say since they're, I mean, they're in effect basically like a committee of, you know, of the village council of the village. I would say that council would be directing them how they want them to perform their obligations or whatever. We could have input from them certainly on what they see their role as and stuff, but as far as putting them down and then saying, hey, here's what we expect of the people that are on there and whatever the rules are.
That doesn't work too good when we say that.
That's the way it's supposed to work, though.
I know they've come...
I mean, they get their funding from the village.
Yeah.
I know they've come to us before saying that, you know, they all voted for something and then we voted against it.
Right.
Like the last item that they have on their thing, they all vote five-zero for the story lock and, but, but we have that...
Which is fine, we got other things that we've got to consider, like the budget and things like that. And I mean, it's one thing for them to approve an idea and think it's a great idea.
And that's what it was, we approved the idea, but we...
Come up with the funding sources.
Right, you didn't accomplish without a sidewalk in the park.
Right, absolutely. I mean, their money comes just like the sewer department's money, I mean, basically. So, they got a budget and everything's got to come ultimately through us for approval, just like it does in the other departments.
So, basically, they're, they're headed in the right direction. They're going to put something together, bring...
Yeah, and then we can bring them, they can bring them to me, whoever, and then we can look at them and try and, you know, get something put together and, but ultimately, it's you people's decision to yay and nay or make a suggestion to add this or whatever. And then once they're passed, then they'll just, that's, that's the rules they'll live by.
And that's what they need is direction.
Which is kind of what the, the only bylaws since I've been here that I remember is the EMS and the fire and stuff have bylaws that they've amended from time to time or whatever and they've kind of suggested changes and got it to the committee and I made some changes to them and whatever, and then we approved them here. So, something similar to that.
I'm meeting with Lindsay, I think Thursday at nine-thirty, and I'll bring this up. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Mike, do you have anything else? Okay. Cheryl, fiscal officer report.
I'm going to have your usual fund status report, which is still looking pretty good. And I want you to look at the coronavirus relief fund that still has thirty thousand in it. It has more rules than the other one, but we still need to spend that by the end of the year.
Nothing like a planned energy study or anything?
No.
Swimming pool?
Has to be coronavirus-related.
Sidewalk, because people be outside.
If you look at the cash summary by fund, so far this year, our revenue was three-point-two million. And look on the expenditures, three-point-eight million. Department. You have the media com franchise fee report for April through June. You have your income tax and utility collections report. And if you notice, the numbers are very odd with this income tax, although it's good overall because the federal government kept moving tax date last year and then this year. And so, last year, you noticed that in May, when it was due, we were ninety-nine percent over the year before. And now we're twenty-one percent lower than last year because they changed the date later this year. So, it's not Kim, it's the government. And that's all I have.
Yeah, and I asked Cheryl, our general fund dropped quite a bit, made me a little nervous, so she explained it's just the timing with the taxes coming in.
Yeah, we did the transfer and then taxes won't come until next month.
Yeah, so that'll, because it was one point four million and went down to seven hundred thousand and I thought, whoa, what happened? So, that's...
Could you give us a couple of, for instances, Cheryl?
Cleaning equipment, salaries.
It has to be COVID-related. Someone has to be off work and gets paid anyway because they have COVID. You can do anything that has to do, like we had put in the bottle filler, the toilets that you don't touch. They, all of their dispensers hanging on the walls, stuff like that, masks.
Can it be used for economic stimulus?
Narrowly. That's all the paperwork in the house.
Christmas cruise through is coming up soon, so it won't be long. They started, I'm over. So, they're going to need lots of volunteers. So, I encourage everybody to help out because that's a lot of work for them. August the twelfth is the last concert series. Last one, I think there were over a hundred people there, so well-attended. And the last one's going to be Water to Wine again. And I want to thank the sponsors this year for that, and that's the Hicksville Bank, SMTA and Cutler Building, right? That's your name. To help pay a little bit to the band, so I want to thank them. So, anything else needs to be come before this council?
Something about the cruise through, and we talked about it last year a little bit. We had such an influx of people converging in our town to watch the fireworks night. We had talked about trying to help find designated areas where people can go because it was, it was a mess. I know the police department was in a daze with things going on.
It was a big...
It was, we had talked about maybe some pre-designated areas where people can just go to a parking lot somewhere instead of trying to get to the fairgrounds. And I know everybody wants to go there first, but after that's full, it's a free-for-all and roads get backed up. And it happens every year, but not to that scale.
It was worse last year.
Yeah. But we had talked about trying to work with the cruise through committee and maybe getting with some other residences, businesses in town, if we had some openings in parking lots and everything where it could be pre-designated and marketed that way to, you know, you can go to this parking lot or that parking lot or this business and watch the fireworks from there and then come to the facility or the fairgrounds after they're over. Trying to alleviate traffic congestion and...
Chief, didn't we have a meeting with the sheriff's department last year after the fact, or the...
Yes.
And there was plans to meet?
I thought it was supposed to be July.
Yeah, that's what I recalled. I'll get ahold of sheriff and see.
I think it was Christmas cruiser that had their meeting in July was supposed to, I'm not sure.
We met.
I think that was what the meeting was going to be.
Yeah.
And then we were supposed to...
Oh.
So, I'm not sure who's really responsible for it. That was my understanding, they were going to have a meeting in July.
Okay, well, we're a couple of days past, but, so I'll get ahold of Denise and maybe the sheriff and see. Just don't let it happen again. I think it was the first fireworks we had for like a year and a half in Hicksville and everybody from the brother came, thinking a lot of it, but it's a nice problem.
In the middle of COVID.
Yes.
And it's, he's got, he's really got a big name.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's why I want to encourage people to volunteer, just keep her encouraged. So, I'll make a contact tomorrow.
She's retiring.
She what?
She keeps retiring.
She's on vacation this week.
With the what?
From the, from running the show.
Didn't know that. So, who's running it now?
I don't know, did pick somebody, Ron Jones.
First I heard that.
Nominee.
Chatted on Facebook.
Well, I don't do Facebook, so, okay, anything else needs to be brought before this council?
Want to talk about the day in the park chicken?
August fourteenth, we are doing a chicken dinner fundraiser. It'll be from eleven AM to three PM. And the chicken, we'll have a tent and everything set up. It'll be out in front of, in front of Red Angel, or you can get pre-sale tickets yet this week.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
Rule call.
Mar. Pass it.
Yes.
Everly.
Yes.
Clipper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.